Let's meet in order. Thank you for coming. If you'd silence your cell phones, that would be great. I better do mine, too. Yeah, mine's good. If you can do that, that'd be great. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance and then the invocation will be done by Ron LaSalle. If you'd stay standing for that.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Father God, we come before you and we praise you for all the blessings you share upon us. We praise you for the rain that's come. And Father, we know we've prayed for it in the past and we've gotten a lot of rain. And Father, we just ask that you hold it in the basement for a while so people can do the things they need to do to be able to shore up their properties. And Father, we lift up our first responders as they're out supporting our community. And we lift up our town staff as they're out working during this inclement weather to protect the town. And we ask for your wisdom as we go about the work of the business of our town. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Roll call. Councilmember Crowder?
Here.
Councilmember Culliton?
Here.
Councilmember LaSalle?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tryon?
Here.
And Mayor Boland?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Is Richard Abbott here? Richard? Oh, great. All right. Sorry you get to stand there and let me read to you something.
Okay, that's fine.
So let me get through this. So, and we love American Red Cross. They've done a great job. So whereas
Thank you.
During American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Paradise and affirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces crisis alone. Whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of Paradise, those simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments, continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas every day these ordinary individuals lead and lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters, supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers, through the unique challenges of service using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies, or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crises around the world. And whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community resilience, and we hereby recognize this month of March in the honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it," and ask everyone to join in this commitment. Now, therefore, I, Greg Boland of Paradise, by virtue of the authority invested in me by the law of Paradise and California, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Red Cross Month and recognize all citizens of Paradise to reach out and support this humanitarian mission.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to say some words? Yes, actually. On behalf of the American Red Cross, we'd like to thank the town of Paradise for giving us this opportunity to continue helping and supporting in all disaster relief efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You guys were vital, so vital to us when we needed you the most. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a presentation of the VIPS, and this will be Frank Dodini will present this annual report. Howdy, Frank.
Good evening, everyone.
I believe you were VIPS of the Year this year, right?
Yes. Yeah, I was privileged to be
Cool.
chosen as VIPS of the Year for 2022. I've been a VIP since 2016, and this is our annual report for 2022. Volunteers in service, police service, which is the VIPS, assist the police department with patrols, communications, and special events. After the fire, our ranks went from 46 volunteers to 12, but despite that, we donated 3,266 and 1/2 hours in 2022. And based on an office assistant pay rate of $24.91 per hour, translated to a financial benefit to the town of $81,368.52, or a month's groceries. Okay. Too subtle, too subtle. Little more if it's a grocery outlet. Okay. Our patrol volunteers do vacation house checks, neighborhood watch, patrols, and patrol recreation areas, school zones, and commercial parking lots, as well as transporting mail between town hall, the police department, and animal control. We logged 1,479 and 1/2 hours in 2022, with six shifts working Monday through Friday. We now primarily patrol evacuation zones until our neighborhood watch areas are more established. In cases of accidents or emergencies like road closures, fires, and down trees, or traffic and disaster, VIPS are available during and after patrol shifts to assist. With fewer incidents requiring VIPS assistance since the fire, we logged 28 hours in 2022. The front counter at the police department is manned by the communications VIPS from 10:00 to 2:00 Monday through Friday, totaling 662 hours service, both electronic, or last year plus an additional 127 hours performing live scan service, both electronic as well as rolled fingerprints, which freed up police personnel and resulted in savings of $3,163.57. They answer questions and take requests from the public, process paperwork for live scans, vacation house checks, and special events, and accept payments and write receipts for various department services. Additionally, they assist records and support services with various clerical duties. I've mentioned special events. Some of the events we assist with are the Parade of Flags three times a year, the Gold Nugget Parade, the Chocolate Fest, Paradise High School football games, and graduation, the party in the park during the summer, Johnny Appleseed Days, the motorcycle toy run, and department tours. The VIPS program is supported primarily from donations, and we receive monthly financial reports from the town. I'm happy to report that we added six new VIPS this year from our first VIPS academy since the fire, and they are currently serving both patrol and communications functions. Our VIPS come from many backgrounds, with everything from helicopter pilots to music teachers, and it's enabled us to relate to citizens on many levels. In most cases, we are the first contact people have with the police department. We take that real seriously. We want that contact to reflect favorably and be a positive contact for people, because how the public sees us is how they see our police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. And tell everybody thank you for all they do. We really, really do appreciate it.
My privilege.
Thank you. Thank you. They do a lot of work. Next presentation, Cal Fire Chief Patrick Purvis will be talking about the Insurance Services Office rating. Good luck on that one.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Council. How's everybody doing?
Good. Good to have you here.
So this is actually going to be a two-part presentation. We added in the 2020 annual review. So you guys will actually go over the call volume for the town of Paradise and the cooperating agencies, and also go through the ISO rating process that just got completed for the last five years. So, for those of you who don't know me, Patrick Purvis, the Fire Chief for the town of Paradise, but I also oversee everything north of Highway 149. So that includes Durham, Nor, Chico, Cohasset, Forest Ranch, Sterling City, Magalia, Concow. So it's quite a dynamic situation if you didn't realize that that's also what we do for the day job portion of it. Next slide, click. Where's that?
The clicker should be there.
Perfect.
Have you checked out?
Maybe. Yeah, it's not working. Okay, so for our ISO review, that's for the insurance service offices. And basically, they come out and they do an overall judgment review of the fire department, the water system, and they calculate how well the fire department is equipped to be able to provide services within the communities. This score then goes back to the insurance companies and helps determine their premiums and how much they're going to be charging for that. It doesn't take into account the wildland portion of what we have within the communities. This is mainly the structured fire scenario and what we can provide to the community. So the three grading criteria that they go through are the fire flows based on the fire suppression needs. So the hydrants systems, the supply testing, the flow testing that goes along with those hydrants to make sure we have adequate pressure at each of them, any additional hydrants or alternative water sources such as water tenders, ponds, reservoirs, stuff like that that we would tap into. That's 40% of the total classification that goes into the ISO rating. And the next one basically deals with our Emergency Command Center, which you guys, we have as the contracting agency for dispatch out of Orville. And that goes through the reporting process, their telecom, their dispatch systems, which also includes our AQMD systems. So when you call 911, they walk the person through various of questions to be able to determine the standard level of response needed, and then what services we're going to be providing. And out of that, 10% of that total classification goes into that criteria. The next one, which goes into the fire department specifically, goes through our equipment, our staffing levels, the training standards, how many hours of trainings you have annually, what topics those trainings are. It goes through how many stations you have, how many personnel you have on, what type of equipment are you staffing at each of those stations, and then it goes through the operations and the community risk reduction, taking all those factors into account. That's 50%, so the majority of the classification process that goes into that review. Next slide. So when ISO comes in and they review all of those, they give you a PPC or your public protection class, and that's how they determine what your ISO rating is for the community. The scale is 1 to 10, number one being the highest, and then number 10 essentially being an unprotected community that has no fire service incorporation to it. In 2006, we were PPC of three. August 16th, we went back through, got upgraded to PPC of two. And then January 2023, we came back with a two. And then the 2X is basically a nomenclature. So if you had a previous rating that wasn't classified, then they gave you an X or Y scale that goes along with it. So we continue with the same ISO PPC two, which is pretty good. If you look at the California standard, which is the first graph on the top there, you got 173 fire departments or communities in California that meet that criteria. Nationwide, you're looking at 1,964. So very good comparison to what a lot of other communities have for fire protection services. What they'll do then is the insurance rates for the residents and the businesses are based on that current PPC for the community. So coming back at two is a very good, and it's a prestigious thing for also the fire department to be able to provide those services and get that level of support. Next slide, please.
I was supposed to get one. You'd have to be probably in a city or something like that.
You are. You're looking at, we'll dive into some of the stuff that goes with that to upgrade it. So we did get docked a few points on the ECC, but we've updated our systems now. So there was some stuff that came in with the AQMD, which is our advanced qualification and medical directives. That was not classified in there. So we've got those fixed. And then also with some of the PSAP stuff. For the fire department side, the biggest thing that we got was the ladder service. Even though the buildings in the town are only at a 35 maximum height, a 35-foot ladder, if you're going to ladder the roof of a building, it's still going to fall about two feet short. So the ladder service and the truck companies in the town was really a big hit to us. Obviously, we have the mutual aid that we can request from Chico and Orville, but the time delay did dock us some points on it. We look at it as a town to get our four-minute response times for all emergencies in the town. They look at it based on the mileage. Obviously, you're looking at flat ground for majority of the communities. You're not looking at the mountainous terrain that we have. So that's a little bit of a different dynamic, but they're looking at one and a half miles from the fire station to a first due agency or address for any type of fire. And then two and a half miles for the first due truck company. The other thing that we looked at that we got dinged on was our company personnel. We have 3O staffing on every town piece of equipment. And then during the Amador side with Station 35, we have an operator and a firefighter. So between them, the on-duty BC, and then the safety officer that we have on 24/7, we have 11 people on duty for responses in the town. And NFPA recommendation is 16. There's no way that we're going to be able to ever reach that with two fire stations in the town. But that was one of the spots that we did get dinged on. For the training side of it, we do, we now use vector solutions. So essentially, it's a train tracking program. So every minute, every hour, everything that's the firefighters go through that they train, they now log into this program. We're now able to provide that to ISO when we come back in and do the audits. And then that will better our scoring system for the training side of it. So that's a brief overview on the ISO. Is there any questions on that?
With the improvements that you're putting in place, any chance to get to a one? Are we still, we're going to be solid?
No, you're looking at 4O staffed engine companies. Every day, you're looking at that mile and a half response time. So we'd have to look at additional, additional fire stations. You know, and there was a lot of great work that was put in by PID and also code enforcement and Tony Shop to be able to ride these stats and get this upgraded. I'm very happy with a two. I mean, in order to get to a one, it's going to take a lot of work to be able to get there.
There's no 2+ then out there either?
No. So, and I mean, we came in very low on the 80s. So I want to make sure that I do everything that we can to be able to get that and maintain our two, our PPC of two for the community.
Put your mic up close.
We had three fire departments.
Mm-hmm.
Three fire stations.
Correct.
And then when we merged personnel, we merged with Station 35. We still had three.
So during the summertime, the state staffs two engines out of Station 35, 3O staffing.
Right. That, that physical station belongs to state.
Yep.
Not us. Ours on WAG staff was Station 3. That burnt down. Station 1 is being remodeled, and Station 2 is still there.
Mm-hmm.
So now, we're, we still have three stations. I mean, though, that's a state-owned station. We staff it.
We pay for staffing during the winter time. So those six months that the state is not funding that engine to be staffed there, the town is paying to keep that engine staffed, to be able to support the town. So you don't pay for the operators, but you pay for the firefighters, and you pay for some of the
Did we ever have 16 for a single-family structure?
No.
Personnel with three stations? We've never had that.
No.
Okay.
So, I mean, even Chico, which has six pieces of equipment that roll out, they're not even going to get an ISO rating of one. So
No, I'm not looking for an ISO rating of one.
Okay.
I mean, I'm happy with a two, too. Being number two is okay.
Yes.
But I was just, you know, like you saying that they kind of dinged us on we didn't have a ladder truck.
Mm-hmm.
And do we have any buildings that are 35 feet tall?
Yes.
Other than the motel?
Yeah, you've got
I just, we do have some.
Yeah, the Minnesota buildings, some of the other ones.
But I thought we got, kind of got dinged because we only have 11 people on duty at any given time, you know?
Well, and that's because of the NFPA recommendation. But if you also look at for a commercial-style occupancy, they're looking at 27 members for a first due fire response. I mean, those numbers are not realistic for what we have within the town. So those are the NFPA recommendations. So that's what they base it off of. So they're going to ding us points.
And the NFC is who?
NFPA. The National Fire Protection Agency. So basically, they provide the recommendations to the departments and set some standards of level to be able to provide.
Cool.
Anybody else? Good job. Thank you.
We got one more presentation real quick.
Okay.
So going through the Paradise Fire Department 2022 Incident Summary, this is lined out by the three stations, only two the Paradise responses. So this does not include Station 35 responding to state incidents. This is solely for what they provide to the town, which is 158 calls. Station 83 ran 673, and then Station 82, 658, for a total of 1,489 calls within the town of Paradise. 55% of those being medical aids, the next highest being public assists, so lift assists, smoke detector checks, any of that kind of stuff that they call in for. And then the next one being medical aid alpha. So essentially, it does not require a Code 3 response, but it requires an engine response to evaluate a patient or work with the medics to be able to transport them. So those were the majority of the calls that we ran. Luckily, no significant incidents within the town this year, which is good to say. So
Do we still have a lot of the skilled nursing facilities that we used to have?
Not nearly as many.
Okay. Because I know it was an issue before when I was on the council. A lot of the calls you get were for medical aid, and a lot of those were to skilled nursing facilities to help pick somebody up off the ground. And all of those facilities to be licensed have to have a hoilift and have to have the ability to lift patients up. And I know that was an issue we looked at once before. Like, these people were kind of taking advantage of the fact that, you know, call the fire department, those big, strong men will come and pick your patient up. You know, they're not having any kind of that problem.
No, not, not a continuous response issue. We do sit on some other committees with hospice, a lot of the healthcare agencies that are within the different communities.
Cool.
And we discuss those issues and make sure. Obviously, as soon as they say, we think the person might be injured from their fall, they can't do anything. They have to augment and send us. So
Great, thank you.
So the next slide here is the Paradise Fire Assist to Cooperating Agencies. So it could be Buick County Fire, it could be Chico Fire, Orville Fire. Pretty similar call volume. Statistic-wise, medical aids being the top one. Vegetation fires being the next one, sorry, TCS, and then vegetation fires. So the TCS obviously would be Clark Road, A to get Lookout Point because it's not in the town's jurisdiction. It then comes as an assist to the Buick County Fire Department. And so that is a total of 340 calls between the three engines that ran them. So we're looking at 1,829 calls, total responses for the three apparatus out of Paradise. On top of that, you've got Rick Manson, who's the battalion chief. He responded to 171 calls within the unit. So that doesn't just include Paradise. That could be Concow or anything else that he's assigned, or if we're short of BC and he has to go to Orville or someplace else. So the last graph on the bottom there, obviously the decline after the campfire. But as the steady increase of calls continue to come back into the town, 2019, 792, 2020, 1,108, 2021, 1,402, and then for 2022, 1,829. So which is, we projected roughly 1,700 calls. So we're a little bit over what we projected for this year. So it does continue to increase based on the growth back in the community.
So what's your breaking point? It's going up each year, and it's going to continue to go up as we bring more people in. Where do you see a problem in the next two, three, four years? Or do you have enough staff to handle this growth for the next three, four years?
We have the staff to handle the growth. The concern is as we start rebuilding the downtown quarter and we start looking at more commercial occupancy, we need to start looking at what our ladder availability is. And that's when we need to start reconsidering once we get over a certain height or portion of buildings downtown, what we can provide. Because we have 35-foot ladders that we're able to carry on the engine, but anything beyond that, because even though you need to have essentially two feet of ladder above the roof, your 35-foot ladder is not going to work. A lot of the areas that we have commercial occupancies now are typically on hillsides. So that also is a downgraded factor to your ladder distance. And so that's at some point in time, we need to look at what our options are for a ladder company, whether it be a cross-staff truck like we used to have. But it's, we just kind of, we're weighing that with the growth of the community and the commercial structures that are getting built. The next slide. So to highlight some of the 2022 Paradise Fire Department stuff that we went through, thank you for everything that we got here. Purchasing of the Type 1 Pierce Fire Engine. So unfortunately, there's a three-year build time. So we will see that within the next three years. That will replace Engine 82, which would be a frontline piece of equipment. Then that will then become a reserve engine. Securing the funding for the remodel of Station 81 that was built in 1965, so much needed, and the progress is coming along great. The purchase of two F-250 utility vehicles, which I know Woody's going to hammer me on for it, but we'll talk about that when we come back down to the reimbursement side. And then the publish of the online fire hazard inspection map. So essentially, the public platform that anybody can go on and look at the inspections that are done within the community and see what the deficiencies are on the properties. We issued 278 residential burn permits, 123 field reduction burn permits between the fire department and through the brick, and then 80 fire flows completed. So the reimbursement on the actual expenditures or the actual equipment that we had that went out this year, including utilities and equipment, was just roughly under $118,000 back to the town. And then on top of that, the budget or the contract that you have with us, we provided back $335,767. So a good amount back into the town.
And so the $118,000, that's, that's when, at wildfires, other places, and our trucks went out?
Yeah. Or, I mean, it could be just as simple as we staff a Paradise engine here behind an engine that goes out on a strike team. If the utilities go out, they're, they get an OES daily rate. So that money comes back in for the town also. So anytime we staff any equipment that goes with the state response plan, whether it be a staffing pattern covered behind, that money then comes back into the town.
That's great.
On the mutual aid, though, where you showed that other slide, it showed the different incidents. We, mutual aid is not reimbursable. That's part of why everybody comes and help us when you need help and all that. That's just an agreement we all have in the fire service and emergency services.
Correct. So the state of California has the best mutual aid agreement that we have across the state. So you can request anything at any point in time. Everybody's going to provide those. I mean, when we requested 100 strike teams of engines to come here for the campfire, they did it, no questions asked. And so it's the same thing that we provide to the rest of the community, such as Chico. When they have a second alarm, typically it will pull an engine out of Paradise and the next due resource. So it's just that reciprocal agreement. If we had a commercial structured fire here, and we basically, the first alarm is your initial assignment. And then if we need to request additional resources, Chico, Orville, anybody else would send them up that has them available at no cost to us.
That's right.
So it worked out really well.
Cool.
For sure.
Great. Any questions? Excellent. Thank you so much. You did great.
Can I ride in your utility vehicle?
Absolutely.
Okay. Tell him to turn his mic off. Oh, wait on it. Presentation Jim McCourt with Meter Investments. Hey, Jim.
Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Good.
I apologize if I answered my raspy voice. First of all, do you hear echo in there?
Yes, that's all right. We can hear you.
Okay.
Don't yell at us.
The last time I was here, we, I apologize, we literally presentation, we did, we did have sent in sponsors to check there. So you should see our, 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 there's some under here little big games.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Can we see this here?
Yep.
Okay, good. First of all, there, the town has no No, 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 that's been in Silver Bell Day or six or seven.
Good job.
That's been the topic of conversation with all our clients this week is just making sure that that was the case. But to give you something on what's happened with the federal reserve and interest rates in general, the Fed has continued their very dramatic interest rate increase or tightening of monetary policy over the last several months. We're about out of your ears around actually since they first raised rates back in March of last year. And this, this graph could give you some context of just how quickly they have raised rates this time versus any other tightening cycle during the last 40 years. So when we look at, coming out of the great financial crisis of '08, '09, and they raised rates starting in 2015, it took them three years to raise rates 2 and 1/2 percentage points. This time, they have now done it 4 and 1/2 percentage points in just under a year. So that's a very dramatic change in monetary policy, which they're doing that right now to fight the inflation that's got out of control in the economy. But when they change policy that quickly, there's bound to be some unforeseen consequences to the economy. And I think that that's one, one of the maybe unforeseen consequences is what's happening with some of these banks this week. So as, even if the Fed has maintained that they have a little more ways to go by raising interest rates to try to combat inflation, the markets started telling them this week, hey, maybe we think you're done because of some of these surprises that have developed just over the last several days with some of these issues at the bank. So it's going to be a little interesting dynamic here to see whether that inflation argument falls away or whether, whether markets, you know, kind of direct to saying, hey, let's take pause here, whether that winds out. So that's something that definitely keep an eye on. But overall, there's, there's, there's no doubt that interest rates are just much, much higher than they were certainly during the pandemic rates were here and then how they climbed so much over the last, over the last year. So this chart here gives you a little more additional treasury yields. And when we talk about treasury bonds, they're really the benchmark fixed income asset class, which is the types of securities that you can buy through your portfolio. So any other type of asset class we buy is based off of where treasury rates are. And we look at a year ago, and then this bottom line is how much lower market interest rates were then, which was just before the Fed first started to raise interest rates, where very short-term rates were still basically zero. And then even up to five years, which is a long maturity we can buy through town portfolio, rates were still just over 1% at that time, close to 1 and 1/2. When you fast forward to the orange line, where market rates really peaked across most of the curve at the end of October, up to the near 5% range. of the curve at the end of October, up to the near 5% range, and then fast forward to this greenish line, which is where rates were just at the end of this past February, just a few weeks ago. So, on a very short end, rates on high, if the Federal Reserve continues to raise that fund rate and maintain, they probably have another like two in there here, again, depending on the outcome of this week's events. But then when you go out longer on the yield curve, the market is starting to go the other direction, where we have this inversion of the yield curve, which when you hear that inversion in, 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 in the talk of the marketplace, that's typically a precursor to a recession, or at least they're slowing that economic activity. So that's where markets are telling the Fed, they're about done, they see inflation pressure coming down, they see growth projects coming down. And so while we have this inverted yield curve here, we still are trying to maintain this diversification of maturities in the portfolio, to lock in some of these relatively high yields, which are higher than we've seen in the market at any time over the last 15 years, to get them into this portfolio, lock them in for three, four, five years, to help stabilize higher investment income over the next several years for the town's portfolio, while we have these opportunities available to us. So when we get into what that looks like for the actual investment portfolio here through the end of February, what we're managing in these funds is what's remaining is about 200, a little over 23 million dollars, which as, if you recall, we started with close about 219 million, so, and that was always within the plans to take about 10 million dollars a year or so, of these funds were up to supplement operations for the town. So we're down to about 203 right now in the portfolio that we're managing. This is the distribution of maturities down here, so this gives you a visual look by annual bucket of where these investments are placed. When we started out a couple of years ago, we really had more larval effect, and we had a good portion of maturities in very short, overnight options upfront here, and then we invested the other portion out longer here. This lock in the middle now is what originally long investments were made a couple of years ago, they now aged a few years down, how maturity labbed. So that's the bulk of this right now, but in general, we are trying to now start diversifying this more, and get this a little more evenly now, so we're focusing now on reinvesting bonds mature upfront, how long they're here, more vibrant range, and then also, as some of these securities get into the, get into a little bit shorter year, swapping them out, getting them into the highest-yield and short-term options we've got available as well, just to try to keep balancing out this overall maturity distribution here. When you look at asset allocation here in the top right corner, this is a different types of security classes the portfolio is invested in, very important to note, all are compliant with California Governor Code 53601, and the town's approved investment policies, so we are constantly ensuring total compliance with COVID and any policies there. One thing that I'll point out here on my last slide, is the, the investment income for this fiscal year, so June 30th, July 1st of last year, to June 30th of this year. The light bars here are the first eight months that we've already been through, so this is cash basis received investment income. When we made the investment income budget for this year, I believe the budget was about 1.1 million dollars in investment income. You can see that through the first eight months of the fiscal year, we have already exceeded that, and due to these rising interest rates, we're now being able to reinvest and give you a little surprise in the upside here as far as the investment income. When you look at projected income over the remaining four months of the fiscal year, there's almost another $900,000 that's built into the portfolio right now, where we did nothing, that is what we, you would realize, additional, so close to about $2 million total. Now, I think that this does give us a little opportunity, because we have some of this buffer between the budgeted amount and the projected amount now, that even in this market of rising interest rates, where fixed income securities, some unrealized losses, it gives us opportunity to continue to restructure the portfolio, and when it makes sense potentially to realize some losses, in order to buy better bonds and better yield over the longer term. So this pushing now in this budgeted investment income really gives us some flexibility to do that. And then we anticipate that as we continue to reinvest in this higher rate market, the investment income budget will continue to rise going into the future, and our, our diversification of maturities is to help stabilize that rising investment income over the longer term. Now, the caveat to that is just depending on how much, how fast funds continue to get drawn out of the portfolio, and supplement operations, but the longer funds can stay in, if we invest in this market, that will just help to keep supplementing the investment income to a higher extent. So, that's the, let me take this off here. That's the slide I have for you, I want to keep relatively sure when I voice give me trouble like this, but I'd be glad to take any other questions or comments on strategy or what we're seeing in markets in general.
So I don't know anything on strategy, but, you know, thank you for telling us we're not involved with those banks, but I don't know that that's going to be the only banks. We don't, we're not involved with any other banks, right? We're not, we're not, we're not involved with any other banks. I mean, they're not going to be the only ones to go down, probably.
You have some investment in negotiable CDs. Negotiable CDs are under $250,000, meaning any investments you have in banks are fully covered by FDIC insurance, which depositors in the banks that did fail are fully covered by FDIC insurance as well, so anybody that wasn't invested, is recouping their funds, you were not in those banks, but if any of the banks you are in should have failed, you are covered by FDIC insurance, but I'm not projecting that that happened.
Okay, so we are, we are protected with our money, you feel good about that?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Anybody? You did great. Don't yell at those kids so much, man. I've been there, I've been there before, I know how that feels. Well, thank you so much, and thanks for getting through that. Appreciate it. You too, bye-bye. All right, campfire recovery updates. They're written. First one is Colette Curtis, Recovery and Economic Development Director, amongst other things, I'm not going to read it all. Any questions or thoughts, or, yeah, no, Rose?
Yes, I think, good afternoon, or evening, Mayor and Council. I believe that Councilmember Tryon has a question regarding an ongoing request for reimbursement that we are pursuing with FEMA. I actually do have a substantial update to that process today, which is the first in about a year. This has been a very long process. So as you may recall, we had submitted a request for reimbursement through FEMA for funding that went towards the private program for the Hazard Tree Removal Program. That was the previous government-run program, not the current voluntary program. So it was about $1 million. We were looking for reimbursement for the private portion of that program, and unfortunately, we just received word that that request was denied. So that was unfortunate news. We are not especially surprised, this is a part of the process that we had hoped wouldn't happen, but also, we are not surprised by it. So we do have an appeal that we are preparing, so we're continuing with that, but we also expected, if it did come to this, that we would be very aggressive in our approach using our legislators as leverage, as well as talking directly with FEMA. So, as you know, we are planning a trip to Washington DC for advocacy purposes at the end of this month, and this will be one of the items that we discuss directly with FEMA, as well as our legislators. So we are pushing forward, again, we are not deterred by this. We, it was somewhat a possible outcome that we expected, we hoped it wouldn't go this way, but we're continuing with the process that we have in front of us. Do you have any additional questions about that?
No, we're probably just crying, is all we're going to do. That's sad news.
It is, it is, we're disappointed, but undeterred.
Yeah, well, thank you for that.
Thank you for your fight, and your continued, I'm sure we'll be hearing more.
Yes, indeed.
Any other questions? Thank you, Colette. Mark Maddox, I know he's not here, so there's no questions for him, right? Or is there someone taking his place? You are? Oh.
If you have a question, I'll try to.
Any questions on Mark's report?
We're actually, yeah.
All right, you're off the hook, good job. Tony Lindsey, CD Building and Code Enforcement, questions for him. Seeing none. Kate Anderson, Business and Housing Manager. And seeing none there. Good job on your reports, thank you. They are good, we do read them. You're just so good, we don't have any questions. All right, we're going to go on to Consent Agenda. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion by Tryon, seconded by Crowder, roll call vote, Councilmember Crowder?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tryon?
Aye.
And Mayor Boland?
Aye.
Okay, next is Public Communication. For matters that are not on the council business agenda, speakers are allowed three minutes to address the council. We cannot take action, we can listen, ask questions, but we cannot take action. Do we have any cards to this?
We do have cards. The first card is from Ward Habriel.
Good evening, and welcome to winter, council, I hope you enjoyed the snow. You know, the good thing is, the Boland Alley roof didn't collapse this time, I guess it was better built, wasn't it? Just to touch on a couple of things, I am really, frankly, in applause to Public Works and the snowplow crew. I mean, I'm in the higher end of Paradise, at the end of a dead-end court, where they have no choice to push it all the way down, right there, at the end of my property. And that's what I have to deal with. But, when I would get out of my front porch, and I'd see them, and that gallon truck 14 had the window down, and I was out there doing this, she knew I appreciated what they were doing, and in fact, I sent Mark Maddox an email to that effect. Frankly, I think we have, because I also had an opportunity to watch some of Buick County's fireplow people, we had some of the best service via snowplow that I have ever seen in many years. I know some of them are new, but frankly, they get my applause, they really do. I just, I got to say that in front of you. I had a chance today, actually, I spent several hours in Sutter, at the Garden Club presentation there, because I'm active in the local garden club, I'm active in the Buick District, I'm actually with the state, active with the State Garden Club, and they have had several issues that have come up lately, that they almost want to disband. And the people that are gardeners in the club, they want to keep working at it, but they've had no cooperation from their city, local fathers, community members that are important in their town, the Fire Department, nobody of any kind of agency has been very supportive of them, and I said, gotta see what we got in Paradise. I mean, the county's on our side, the town's on our side, the Fire Department's on our side, you name it, the garden club is supported by everything around us. And I'm not sure what the difference is, except that in Paradise, we have been very vocal about what it is that we want to do that is to the benefit of the town. It doesn't matter whether we're planting daffodils in front of the Fire Department, or we're cleaning up a triangle on Skyway. What we want to do is to be part of what makes this community, our community, and your community, and why it's worth being here, doing this kind of stuff. They don't have anything like that, and it really bugged me to hear that from them, and I'm not sure if there's anything I can do about it. And I just remind you that we have our annual tour coming up, June 3 and 4, there'll be a plant sale at PID, this is where you get a $20 ticket, you go to visit six properties, we have a couple of them that are going to be featured at very much water conservation, and a couple of much, that are very much featured as fire-safe properties, and well worth seeing simply because of the story those properties tell. But thinking of that, I also want to tell you that I, like many other people that have a manufactured home, or a mobile home, are insured by American Modern, and American Modern has sent thousands of letters out canceling homeowners' insurance. And yet, on Commissioner Lara's insurance website, it still says that American Modern is offering discounts to homeowners in fire-prone areas if they meet a certain criteria. My house certainly does, I have every wooie upgrade, I have a steel roof, I have no flammable materials from my neighbor's yard, and yet, I can't get insurance with them, even though they're on the state website that says they offer insurance here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next card is from Rich Gowan.
Rich?
Sorry, carefully get up. Rich Gowan, 1821 Stark in Montseles of that road, and I appreciate standing in front of the mayor, as well as the council, and my military officer, being an Air Force man myself, got to salute the man. I want to thank you for taking a couple of minutes just to share some things. First of all, I'd recommend that you leave the building in a buddy system. I went to turn my back on the wind this evening, to lock my car, and ended up down by the FEMA camp, and then walked back up the hill. It's breezy out there. The other thing I want to do, one of the things, is just personally thank, both as the Executive Director of PID and Manager, all the assistance you gave, not only to my family, but our neighborhood, very much appreciated. Kevin stands out strongly in terms of a community leader for us, that's an important thing. I understand also, very briefly, that you might be reviewing ordinances impacting those that end April 30, 2023. My family and I are interested, since variables still exist, to our rebuilding plans, we've been here for, gosh, going on 30 years, I can't believe that. We've been here for almost the 30 years in Sea of Paradise, still as our home, community, and, gosh, at my age, perhaps my final resting place, who knows? I would like to see that. So we're very interested in your dialogue regarding that, and the variables that impact families in reaching their rebuilding goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was my last card.
Is it? Anybody else? Seeing nobody, we're going to move on. So we have a public hearing. So in this, we're going to conduct a duly noticed and scheduled public hearing to solicit comments and suggestions regarding the 2023-24 Community Development Block Grant Annual Plan Funding Priorities. It's the first of two public hearings, no action is required at this time.
Hello, good evening, council. So just as you had mentioned, we're here to solicit comments and suggestions regarding our 23-24 annual action plan. As you know, the town has been an entitlement since 1994. The entitlement communities develop programs and funding priorities, we develop them here. Typically, HUD will allocate approximately 100,000, it's 10691 for this coming year, to the town for programs and projects directly benefiting our low-to-moderate-income households. So over the next several weeks, staff will prepare a draft action plan for your review. We have already initiated the public services applications, we received two of them from two recipients for this year, so that application has been put out there. We have received one comment from a nonprofit who was interested in building back a group home-type facility that was existing here before, so we'll take that into consideration. We're also taking into consideration and talking with, for instance, Campfire Collaborative and their disaster case managers, talk about the possibility of using these funds this year to assist those folks in RVs, and in seeing if we can help some of them find more permanent housing. So, the next steps are, over the next two weeks, we'll be preparing a draft, over the next month, we'll be preparing a draft to bring to you next month, and that will open up the comment period. If we receive no comments on the draft, we'll get your blessing to submit that for next year. So there's no impact on the general fund for this, in fact, it brings another 10691 into the community. So with that, could I answer any questions?
Any questions?
What is the criteria for low and moderate income persons? Do you?
Typically, it is 80% area median income or less. So those are income levels that HUD puts out that we follow.
Okay, and then is there going to be money available for, like, multifamily units?
So typically, what the So typically, what the parameters are, we have 100,000, so that's easy math, luckily. We are allowed to have up to 15%. No more than 15% can go to public services. That's that subcommittee where we put out the applications for. We'll be meeting here shortly. Another 20%, no more than 20% can go to administration of these funds. So that would leave about 65% or 65,000 toward any projects that we choose. For instance, we did a public improvement project with the sidewalks. So we could do a housing project that could, might, I don't think it'll include multifamily. I'll have to look into that. But typical housing options are rental assistance, reconstruction, first-time homebuyer assistance. It can be toward other housing opportunities.
Can it be used for, say, an RV park?
To purchase?
To help put together or help rebuild?
That is, we're only dealing with 65,000, so it's a small amount. But we might be able to, and we want to work with a couple of the other nonprofits to look at maybe a master lease, where we could lease multiple spaces and then be responsible for those. Or we might provide some incentive, maybe with these funds. I have to look into it and talk to our reps, but maybe we can provide the first three months of their space fees, something like that. And that might also hold true for apartments where we can provide so many months to get people into more permanent housing. You know, the folks are in RVs. The state looks at them as housed. The federal government doesn't, so it's always a quandary. I don't know. In the housing department, I don't look at them as housed. People in RVs, it's not a permanent housing solution. So we'd love to assist in that way, if we can.
So you're saying on the rental assistance, you could provide rental assistance for RVs to move into the mobile home parks as a rental assistance?
I believe, exactly. I'm going to, we, every other Thursday, we talk with our HUD reps. So I think that is a possibility, and I'll get that clear.
Good. Anything else? It's hard to believe the state and feds don't agree on something.
Yeah.
It's just very hard to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna open up. It is 6:53, and we will open it up to the public to comment on this. Don't all jump at once. Okay, seeing nobody interested in this, we're gonna close it at 6:54. That's great. Change right there. Looks like we did something. Okay, thank you. So there's no action required. I think we just move on, and we'll have our next hearing when it comes back. Okay, council consideration, 6A. Upon conclusion of the public discussion of this agenda item, consider approving an agreement between Town of Paradise and Mark Maddox to serve as interim town manager beginning April 14. Adopt alternative direction to the town staff.
So I take the lead on this, and obviously, you've all been told that my last day will actually be April 14. Mark has raised his hand and stepped up to give his service as interim, as the council does their recruitment and interview process. What you have before you is a contract for him to step into that role. Some things to point out is that I believe there's a six-month expiration on that contract, and then also the ability for either one to decide to have the contract expire at any time with some noticing to give. If Mark feels like this is not working out for him, then he has the ability to move back into his role as Public Works Director seamlessly. And with that, I can answer any questions. I have full faith and allegiance to Mark, and that he will do a great job in this role.
Okay. And I think we've used this boilerplate before. Is that correct? Back with Lauren, I think?
Very similar.
Very similar? Okay.
Yeah. It's been reviewed by legal.
This document was modified by me a little bit. So the format is similar. You should recognize it, but the terms are slightly different.
Okay. Yeah, it would be a different setup. But any questions on this? Anybody? Anyone that, we have any cards for this? Anybody want to speak to this? Yes.
We'll miss you.
No. Oh, okay. You want to come up, or do you want to?
Sorry.
That was it? Okay. Yes, we will. And that was not a good day when I got that news. So we very much appreciate what Kevin has done for us. And he's done an excellent job. So anyway.
Thank you.
He's still leaving, even after I said that. He's still leaving. All right, bring it back to the council. What's your wishes?
I move to approve the contract for Mark.
I'll second it.
By Crowder, seconded by LaSalle. Okay. Thank you. Roll call vote. Councilmember Crowder?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tryon?
Aye.
And Mayor Boland?
I don't want to say aye, but aye.
So Mayor Boland, I do have, Mark sent me a text and asked me to read this if his contract was approved. He's not here, but he asked me to read it.
Okay.
"I'm so thankful for this opportunity to lead our amazing team, even for just a short moment, while we work to find our town manager. Paradise is immeasurably better for Kevin's hard work and perseverance, and we all can't wait to see who will join us next to keep the momentum going."
Great. And I very much appreciate Mark. He's got plenty on his plate, and I know he has a great staff. And I very much appreciate the staff and what they're doing. But anyway, and I know he'll get a lot of help, but I appreciate his stepping up and being willing to do that for us.
Mayor, is it going to be an opportunity for the public to say goodbye to him in a community-wide?
I'll be here next month.
He'll be here next month. And then there's gonna be a...
We're gonna have champagne and, yeah.
I was not thinking that, but that's... All right, 6B. Consider reviewing and approving the updated federal advocacy platform. Collette?
Good evening again, mayor and council. This is an item that is coming back to you. This is the draft federal advocacy platform. You saw this last month in draft form. There really have been no real changes to this, although we did have one last-minute addition of that, what we call a version request, or it's a reimbursement request to FEMA for those private tree program funds. So that has been added as a priority item to this platform. But other than that, there were no changes from last month. Again, this is the platform that will be used in our upcoming advocacy trip, as well as for any, you know, ongoing advocacy that happens at the staff and council level. So with that, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions?
Just a comment. That's a very well-drafted document. I really appreciate reading through it and all that. Lot of good detail in there.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak towards this? If you gotta jump quick for me, or I'm just gonna go on. So seeing nobody, we're gonna move forward. What's the will of the council? Second.
Motion by Tryon, seconded by LaSalle. Roll call vote. Councilmember Crowder?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tryon?
Aye.
And Mayor Boland?
Aye. Thank you for putting that together. 6C. Consider reviewing bid results and authorizing staff to enter negotiations with recommended consultant for as-needed post-fire rebuilding assistance, Community Development Department. And two, authorizing the town manager entered to an agreement, multi-agreement. The agreement will be executed in the form of approval of the town attorney or give directions. So, Susan?
Thank you, Mayor Boland. Good evening, council. I'm gonna do the presentation for this. Since Tony was gone last week, I prepped for this in his absence. So as mentioned, this is the results of an RFP that Community Development Department put out in early February for ongoing on-call-as-needed professional services. And that could be building, fire, code enforcement, septic, or planning. So the general scope of that RFP, really, the meat and potatoes of it is going to be building plan check and inspection. Likely, the plan check would be done off-site. All of these consultants do electronic plan check. But also having inspection services just available to us as backup, should we need it for, you know, if we had prolonged staff illnesses, or something catastrophic happened, we'd have a bullpen to pull from. Other services that were listed in the RFP that we made available to bid upon also, and you could just do it as standalone trades as well, planning and SEQA, that's environmental review services, septic, that's a hard one to find locally, fire code inspection, code enforcement, and then the ADA CASP, which is certified access specialists. The way the RFP was written, would that, was that it would be a one, I'm sorry, it'd be a four-year contract to start with, with the ability for two single-year extensions. It would be a not-to-exceed-for-all-the-contracts-issued of $3 million for that initial four years. So that's an annual budget of $750,000. And that budgeted line item would come out of the existing Enterprises Fund Professional Services account. Currently, we budget about 850,000, so it'd be a slight decrease because we're just not needing those services as much as we have been. We, at one point, we were budgeting about 2.6 million a year, so it keeps going down. So that's what we anticipate, is every year, 750,000. We'd have this on-call bullpen of professionals if we needed help. And so the purpose of it, there's two main parts to this. One is, we still have two onsite contract staff members from our Fourleaf contract, which is ending this month, that we would like to keep for a little while longer. So by awarding these contracts, that allows us to keep them in-house, but it would also then create this eligibility list that we have of professionals across the board. And some of these bidders specialize in certain areas, whether it's planning, or fire, or septic. And it just allows us, you know, the ability to contract with those who have the highest qualified consultants at that time. Again, the contracts are written in a way that there's no guaranteed billing. There's no guaranteed services for that. They're just on-call. And so this really helps augment our staff when we have peak submittals, like we did during the code cycle change, right? We went from 50 plan check inspect, or plan check submittals for houses to over 200 in December. So that's the kind of services those help us with, as well as, like I said, some of these divisions are not deeply staffed. And so if I had one or two people out, we'd need to call out for somebody to help us. And then also just providing those specialty services, like planning or wastewater. So we had eight consultants bid. Previously, the town had consulted with Willdan in the mid-to-late 2000s for plan-checking services. And then, of course, Fourleaf, that we're in a contract with right now, did rebid it, and we're interested in re-awarding. So staff's recommendation, because there's just eight, and there's so many specialties that they have, would be to award contracts to all eight bidders. They're all responsible bidders, and it would give us a very high-level and deep bullpen to pull from for contract services. And so the request tonight from council is to authorize the staff to enter negotiations with all the submitting consultants for this as-needed assistance, and then authorize the manager to enter into multiple agreements. We'll use a form as approved by the town attorney. All the consultants got to see our standard professional services agreement. Almost all of them approved it as-is. Others had just minor language tweaks that we would work on with them. And so if there's any questions?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So four-year contract with all of these consultants or people?
Yes.
Not to exceed $3 million, $750,000 a year?
Correct.
With two one-year extensions?
Mm-hmm.
Where's the money for that?
Those, if we did the extensions, we would just rebudget each year for another 750,000. Yes, sir.
And when you say budget, that comes out of the...
Enterprise fund.
Right. I just want to make sure.
Yes, not the general fund. So these are funds that were paid for by the building plan checks and inspection fees to pay for these services.
Right. Right. Thank you.
And so if we don't, we can ward the contract and never use them?
Correct.
So how many do we have right now that are from Fourleaf?
We have one full-time and one less than full-time.
And would those are what departments?
Planning and building. A gentleman who can both plan, check, and inspect, and then I have an associate planner.
Okay. Good. Other questions?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that has any comments to this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. What's your...
Move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you very much.
Motion by Colleton, seconded by Crowder. Roll call vote. Councilmember Crowder?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tryon?
Aye.
And Mayor Boland?
Aye. Thank you for that. And that's, that's a good deal. I'm glad we got to use them all. That's, I didn't know that was impossible.
By the way, Susan, that was a much better presentation than we usually get from Tony, just by the way.
Ow. Ow, that hurt. All right, 6E. Upon conclusion of the public discussion of this agenda, consider adopting Resolution Number 2023-dash?
12.
That's what I said, 12? What was the one above that? 11? I'm the sharpest pencil in this drawer. A resolution of the town council of the Town of Paradise proclaiming the existence of a local emergency or to adopt an alternative direction. And I don't know who does this. Who's doing this?
Ashley?
Oh.
We have them in different order here?
What are you looking for?
You're right. That's the one I circled next. Yes, I'm sorry.
I wrote 12, and I went to 13, but I think it is 12.
Yeah, so you're not up yet. So I'm sorry. I jumped one. Trying to hurry this meeting along. Help me get back to you in a second. We're on 6D.
6D.
It's just you read the wrong title.
So this is the public utility easement?
All right, so the resolution of the town council of Town of Paradise providing the summary of vacating the existence of a 12-foot-wide public utility easement on the south property line of Lot 8 Rancho Estate. Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
I'm glad you're on it, because I obviously...
That's okay. So we don't have a presentation, but essentially, this is the, a public utility easement and the summary vacation, which per the Streets and Highways Code, there are specific requirements for summary vacations, and when we can do them, and what the requirements are. So this is a 12-foot easement that was offered for dedication before the town's incorporation. No proof that was ever accepted. However, it has not been used, and upon the request to vacate it, it meets the standards for a summary vacation, in that it has not been used for the past five consecutive years. And so the resolution in front of you meets the other Streets and Highways Code Sections 8335, which are the various requirements for vacation, and then 8336, which directs the clerk to record the easement vacation without acknowledgement.
Okay. So this obviously makes a difference with this lot for someone to build on it. Is that correct?
Yes, and it's specific to how they are going to meet their onsite septic requirements. They can now use this space to meet their requirements, whereas they were precluded from doing that with the easement in place.
Perfect. Okay. Good. Any questions on this?
So that easement was never used? Because it exists on all those other parcels too, right?
Correct. So essentially, without proof of it being accepted, we do have to go through the vacation process so that it can be summer, it can be vacated through the Streets and Highways Code. It doesn't mean that it was ever adopted, but this is the process to clear it for them to be... to be able to use it, specific to the lot that's requested it.
But it exists on all the adjoining lots?
It would have, it's kind of the?
I mean, could it ever be used again?
It would have to be, I believe, Scott, it would have to be accepted in order to be used. So there's a step in between, but because the Streets and Highways Code is, favors the offer of dedication, we have to specifically vacate it so that it won't be used. If we had wanted to use it, we would've also had to have accepted it.
There's, there's a lot of properties in Paradise that have these, that just go right through the middle of the properties, and a lot of them aren't even used. Some of them are, some used to be OPID Waterline at one time, but?
I have one of them on the property.
Right, so.
Okay, I just wanna, I mean, that's, you know, it's like, I get why they wanna do this, and why we need to do, I get all that, but what, it doesn't make any sense to me in this whole subdivision, that easement goes all the way along, so now there'll be one section in the middle, so they could never use these easements that are attached to all the other properties, unless those property owners ask for a vacation, yeah, vacating that easement.
That's correct. And they not only have, the town is not the only right to that easement, because it's public utility with that blanket, the, this owner went to the other four utilities to prove that they also don't have?
Any plans to?
Yeah, plans to exercise that easement. So I believe it's the request from the owner, coupled with the proof from all utility right holders, and then the public hearing following the specific requirements of the Streets and Highways Code. So the process is in place for a reason, right, so that it's not accidentally done, it's not done without public hearing, but?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, anyone in the audience like to speak to this? Okay, seeing nobody there, bring it back to Council. I move to we approve.
Second?
Motion by LaSalle, seconded by Cullaton, roll call vote, Councilmember Crowder.
Aye.
Councilmember Cullaton.
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tryon.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowlin.
Aye. Okay, are we on 6E?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Which will, which will be 12.
What's that? Which should be, yeah, it'll be 13, right? Well, I'll get there and you tell me. Upon conclusion of the public discussion of the agenda item, consider adopting Resolution Number 2023 dash?
13.
What's 13? My bad.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Paradise proclaiming the existence of a local emergency or alternative direction. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. As many of you know, we have had some inclement weather lately, and we, the Council declared a state of emergency during the, what I'll call the first wave of the storm, which included mostly rain and, and, and high winds. The, it did not include a, a snow event. Subsequent to that first, what I'll call the first wave of inclement weather, there was a natural break in that, in that, in that weather storm, another front has come in. And so this is, is to declare a, an adoption of a, or a declaration of a local emergency related to snow. It gives you the ability to tap into state and federal resources, should you need them for reimbursement, should anybody become stuck, or, or, you know, or, or unable to, you know, to, to, if their mobility is limited based on the, on the snow event. It covers not only the snow event that you've, that you've had, but any that may be coming up shortly, although it looks like it's gonna be mostly rain. But this is a, this is a second declaration. Most emergency declarations last for a finite period of time, usually no longer than 60 days. They are usually, they're enacted by the Council, and then they're ended by the Council. So you declare one a beginning and an end. The previous one has not yet been declared ended, although it certainly has ended. So this, this declaration is twofold. It ends the first one, and it begins the second one. The first one, as I mentioned, did not include snow. This one does. And, and so there is a, because of the timeframe of when these storm events happened, the first declaration of emergency could not simply just be extended into the second one because of that 60-day window. So it's necessary to then declare an end. Butte County also declared an end to the first one, as of January 31, we're matching that date. And, and this second one, when this was drafted, the state had not yet declared an emergency, nor had the feds, they both now have. And it does include Butte County. There are 34 counties included as of just the other day, and I think maybe six were added today. I, I lose track, anyway. Butte County is on the list of the original 34 that were named, when the state declared their emergency. The feds have also followed suit.
Okay. I had a question asked of me, that if there's, if there's these funds, do these funds include if people had a problem with their homes in these storms, or is it just to do with?
Not, not typically. Typically, it's for public works. Now, now where you may have some instances, and I'll give you, I'll give you an instance, in San Bernardino County, there were some individuals who were so snowed in, like up in Big Bear, up in the mountains, that they could not leave. So helicopters were brought in to drop provisions down to them. Technically, they could be charged for those provisions, where there not a state of emergency in effect. In this instance, there is one, so they won't be charged for any of that, of course, that'll be, that'll be just part of the emergency. So typically, it is just for public works, but in instances like that, where you have a one-off, where someone can't get out, and, and someone has to go in and either hike in and bring them something, or, or drop some, you know, some provisions, that would be included.
Okay.
It's not in the usual scenario.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, do we have any cards to this?
I have no cards on this item.
Anyone wanna speak to this? Seeing none, gonna bring it back? I did see animals lining up, looking for a boat today. I don't know what that meant, but it was really coming down. All right, what you guys wish to do?
That took me a minute.
About that?
That took me a minute.
I'll move for approval.
Okay. We have a second?
Second. Motion by Cullaton, seconded by Tryon, roll call vote, Councilmember Crowder.
Aye.
Councilmember Cullaton.
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tryon.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowlin.
Aye. Council, Council agenda, agenda items you'd like to bring up, we have two of them here. Speaking of the ordinance, number 612, Councilmember Cullaton.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would ask that you, I would ask that you maybe table these two items, and maybe let the public know that we're gonna schedule a special meeting for further discussion.
Yes, we will be having one. It looks like it's gonna be agendized for 11 o'clock on Friday, to discuss these ordinances and, and some, some issues pertaining to that. So we're gonna just table these at this point, and then Friday, we will pick those back up. Council reports and committee representations. Ron, you wanna go first?
Sure. I happened to attend the Tourism Business Improvement District meeting. It was my first time attending, it was an interesting meeting with all the different businesses represented. Things I took away is Melissa Schuster was appointed to the board, and Colette Curtis was appointed to the advisory board to that committee. They have some interesting topics that came up. One of them that I took away, that I brought back to the staff, was the fact that they've applied to receive anonymous-type data of cell phone traffic. And the reason that's interesting is I was involved in the early days of that in AT&amp;T, when I worked that, we call it big data. That allows you to track cell phones anonymously. In other words, you don't know the people, but you know the phones, so you can see where they come from, where they aggregate, and where they go to after that. Where this will be beneficial is when we talk about the TOT and the ability to know, are we bringing people in from out of town? This type of tool will graphically be able to present that kind of information, and it'll say where they came from, and where they ended up here in our town, and how long were they there before they left. And that data should be available from the T-Bid, they're working on it now, they've got a new contract in place that's much more robust than the prior one, allows you to run all kinds of analysis on it. So I thought it was well worth meeting, going to.
Okay.
So I, I have a question, if you can answer that.
You wanna turn that, turn around a second.
So people have cell phones from wherever, and, you know, my, my, my cellphone is not out of Butte County, so would that, how would that show up?
When you are using a provider's cell tower, they have that information, regardless of where you're at, and purchase it, they purchase it and aggregate it, there's companies that do that, and they aggregate it, so whether it's from Verizon, or T-Mobile, or AT&amp;T, those companies wanna monetize it, so they make it available, and there are companies that pull that down and aggregate it, and they provide services out of that, so that you can query it in ways you want. And again, the, the phone companies themselves make it anonymous, 'cause they understand the privacy aspect of it, and all you know is there's a hit here, and it stayed there for that period of time, and it went someplace else, or a group of it, things of that nature.
Great, thank you.
I still don't like it, but that's okay. I think it was good information, but I don't like it.
Can we block that?
Turn your phone off, put your SIM card out.
Take the battery out.
Take the battery out, SIM card out, or something. Steve?
Well, we had, last, last month, we had a lot of special council meetings, and I, I was at all of those, and, and I got to spend a day with the Press Democrat out of Santa Rosa. They were doing, I think, a great article on Adventist Health, and we toured Paradise, and, and we talked, and they did a, did a great article, and I believe that it was in last, last Sunday's Press Democrat. And if you haven't had a chance to read it, go, go read it, I think it was very well-done, well-thought-out, and it applied to Santa Rosa as well as Paradise, and it just gives some of the backstory of what's going on, and I, I think that everybody here needs to read that, and that's about all I've got.
Thank you. Rose?
On February 15th, I went to the Paradise PID liaison meeting. Good news out of that is that PID said that they will be installing laterals to all parcels now. On 16th, I attended a community meeting regarding a sex offender being relocated to the Town of Paradise. Luckily, with all the residents coming together, that is not gonna happen. On February 23rd, I attended BCG, and Town of Paradise is receiving a $250,000, $250,411 grant for downtown sewer zoning overlay. BCG is also gonna continue their work on the Paradise Transit Center, which, which will be over around the Pearson and Black Olive area. On February 23rd, I also attended the Butte County Air Management Board Budget and Finance Committee meeting. And then, today, I also attended the Solid Waste Management Committee meeting. The HHW program has been postponed until May because of weather. The recycling center is open Wednesday through Saturday from 8:30 to 4:00 p.m. Green waste yard is open Friday and Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m., $20 for the first two yards. And kind of the bad part about it is, is we're still waiting for numbers from NRWS regarding SB 1385 food waste. We've been, it's been a couple months now that we're trying to get the numbers from them, so we kinda know where we stand with the collection pickup. So that's it.
Thank you. Steve?
I didn't do nothing.
Thank you.
I, no, I went to, I went to that solid waste meeting, got there late, and a couple of other meetings, that, there was nothing really going on there. At the Consortium of Care, I have nothing to review.
And I would like to say on that meeting we had at the CMA Church on the sexual predator, that I very much appreciate the, the number of people that showed up, I thought it was a very good meeting. You know, those things can kinda get crazy, and people didn't, it was very good. I thought everybody, Chief, you did great up front, along with our district attorney, and, and that was, that was just a great, and our sheriff, that was a great time of everybody coming together. I mean, I, I don't like those kind of situations, bringing us together, but I, that's, that's what Paradise does when we see that we have an issue. So, that was good. I don't know if, go ahead.
Can I, I wanna add to, 'cause I went to that meeting as well, and a whole bunch of people do. In case the public doesn't know, for everybody out there, and just so it's on the record, the real estate company that built and owns that house on Gate Lane withdrew their offer to whatever, Evergreen, whatever they're called, the people who wanted to house that guy here, so he's not coming to our town.
So, at that, we are, we met, I think this was since our last meeting, we met with the SPI, and the discussions with the lawsuit with the fire retardant, there's a, there's a group that wants to stop fire retardant being dropped from planes, if you can believe One of their three reasons was, well, one of the reasons they said for it is that we're not building resilient houses, and, and the fish might get hurt. And so, I had a nice interview with a couple situations. So, anyway, that, that's going on, and that will continue to go on, and it's very disappointing that we have to spend our time on something as crazy as that, but we do, and I'm willing to spend whatever time it takes, and we told them that. So with that, and LAFCO, LAFCO is just the normal stuff, there is some things coming up that are gonna be very important to Paradise, and again, I hope, I hope I can keep that seat for Paradise moving forward, I think we need it, and we'll see what happens there. That's it for that. Future agenda items, anybody have anything for that? Seeing none, staff communication, town managers' report?
Yep, I'll do it real quick, and then Susan will do a little community development updates. So one thing, from the Community Resilience Challenge Grant, so remember, we got this grant probably two years ago from the Bay Area Council, to look at affordability of insurance within Paradise. It's kind of morphed into a, a bunch of larger project, merging actually with the Parks and Recs project with the buffer zones. So as they're looking at the buffer zones, they, they had very similar consultants helping them with looking at risk modeling, is what it is. So we've kind of merged together to really look at both projects, and how we can mitigate against wildfire in, in a risk management standpoint. The, the individuals that we're looking at, the one was Milliman, which is an actuarial, a large actuarial firm that does most insurance companies, and then CoreLogic. I actually looked at my insurance statement, and at the bottom, it said your modeling was done by CoreLogic. So this is a very large, well-respected group of individuals that did a lot of the behind-the-scenes modeling and actuarial. They have finished their work, and so we actually are in the executive summary stage of that. Some of the things that are coming out are very positive in the mitigation standpoint, but I'll caveat that for, for you and for the public, is that there's still work to be done. Where their modeling is showing that what we're doing here in town works, building back more resilience, the IBHS standards for homes, looking at the buffer zones themselves, having defensible space within the town boundaries, maintaining those defensible spaces, meaning like what the Fire Safe Council, what CAL FIRE is doing within town to clear those areas, and making sure they're maintained. It works. The, the area that we're running up against is that we can prove that, that we have mitigated against these, these, these risks. We can prove that it should lower your risk as an insurance company, but it still is not to the point where the insurance companies are gonna lower their rates. And the reason why is because of the regulations associated with the California Department of Insurance on how they operate. And so? And so that will be our next step moving forward, is looking and taking this data and presenting it to the California Department of Insurance to say, "You need to change your regulations based on the work that is done within a community that is proven to lower the risk associated with these natural disasters." Some of the numbers I'm going to throw out, um, you know, they're not, they're not right on the nose, but some of the IBHS stuff is showing 50% reduction in risk. Some of the buffer zones, uh, these internal fire breaks is what we're calling them, but maintained areas are showing up to 35% risk reduction. Buffer zones are showing up to like 27% risk reduction. Those are big numbers of risk reduction that can be, that can be done, and we're doing those type of things, so, uh, really exciting news, but not to kind of squash it all, but I don't want to get everybody's hopes up that just because we're doing this means that we're going to have these, these reductions in insurance, there's still these next steps that need to go forward. So that executive summary should be coming out here shortly, probably within like the next four or five months. It should be pretty good, uh, you know, information that's come out of this, and then the next step forward is, uh, obviously going to the Department of California Insurance to get these regulations changed, but also to look at those buffer zones that the Parks and Rec are looking at, and looking at ways to fund those, and to bring those so that they can come to fruition, not only to build them, but to then to maintain them. And then continuing to maintain those internal fire breaks, which is just maintenance of those, of those areas, mostly those streamways and, and canyons within town.
But if we're going to get where we want to be, we got to go through these steps first.
We have to.
So, that's, that's a good.
This, we, we've, we've built our case, and now it's time to take it to the, really, the judge, jury, and executioner, which is California Department of Insurance, to, to ask them for those changes to move forward. And then I was able to present a rotary, um, about a lot of our projects that were coming forward into the future, really good feedback, um, and, uh, I, I feel like those have really positive effects for this community with the CDBGDR, infrastructure dollars, and, and the repaving of all those roads, so. With that, I will actually turn it over to Susan, unless there's any questions for me.
No question, while she's coming up, we do have the GOAT festival, speaking of,
The GOAT Festival.
Upper zones.
They work, they work.
They do, they eat it, and then they get rid of it, yes, that's right, but it's a good thing.
Good evening, council. So just some updates since we talked last month about some activities happening, happening in the Community Development Department. Last month, at the Planning Commission Meeting, which happens a week after council, they did approve two affordable housing projects, one's the 140-unit, uh, project on Cypress Lane on Upper Clark, and then the other was a 21-unit senior apartment complex on Upper Pence at the corner of Pence and Kingdom Court by Southern Ridge Baptist.
How many was that?
Uh, 21 for the senior, and 140 for the other one, which is a mix of senior and family. Next week, at the Planning Commission Meeting, they'll be reviewing and make a recommendation on the short-term rental ordinance, so that will come back to council for introduction in April, as well as a use permit hearing to rebuild and expand the Country Club Market that was at the corner of Sterns and Pence. There's still the fuel pumps sitting, so getting those back in operation, rebuilding the mini mart there, but, um, I think just less than 1,000 square feet larger than it, it was before, but it'll be a great bonus for that neighborhood to have that back. Next week, we are scheduled to issue building permits for 43-unit affordable housing complex on Maxwell Drive. This was in place of rebuilding them as condos, they were picked up, the airspace is getting merged back together, so it'll just be apartments. Another, uh, project that we're working on right now is, uh, Paradise Rebuild Foundation has been working to get their master plans updated for the new code cycle, so those first set of plans are in, we're doing plan check right now on them, so they'll be able to start updating their online master plan library. The facade and sign design for the Ross Retail Store up in the Kmart Plaza has been approved, and we've issued them a demolition permit to gut the interior as they're prepping for Ross to take over, I think the timeframe was in May. Also, uh, we've been working for a while on getting residential landscape plans prepared that would just be available for free for the public, um, with appropriate plantings for this area, all the appropriate buffers between structures with, uh, the irrigation plan, so those final construction plans are, um, expected at the end of this week, and then we'll work on getting them up on the website with the instructions for those. And then lastly, staff has been working, uh, with Jack in the Box to locate a site to purchase and rebuild. They were just tenants at their old site, and for whatever reason, that's just not an option, but they're interested in coming back, so I had done some legwork about five years ago for Carl's Jr., so kind of going back and seeing what's still available for that type of use, but that was great news.
That is great news.
Yeah.
Now, Rockin' Rooster has had some stuff going on, do you know anything about that?
Yes, that is, um, there's a sushi restaurant in Megalea that is opening.
Sushi?
Yes, that's opening a second at that site.
Yeah, that was, I was going to ask, I had asked Colette this earlier.
Yeah.
In the Economic Development Department, uh, you know, it only talks about like Ross was going to come in, and, uh, we see a lot of other activity in town, so maybe you could coordinate with her, or if we, we could get in your report, like, those kinds of things, because I've seen like, I saw the Rockin' Rooster thing going on, and, and I've seen a few other things, like somebody's in the old, uh, where Paradise Stronger started out in the old dry cleaning building.
Yes, I know this, somebody's, oh, I know this.
You know, I.
Barber, there's a barber shop going into that complex.
You know, I mean, it would be really helpful for us and, and for the public, because they don't really know, these things are in the background being worked on, they don't realize, it's just great that we can.
Right.
Let people know that, if you could somehow let us know, uh, monthly what.
Yeah.
Who's, who's doing stuff, share it, thanks.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good news, it's always good to hear, and I'm glad to hear Fire Department having more calls, that means more people are up here, so, that's a good thing. Okay, I think that's it, unless I missed something? Thank you all for coming.